Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to our proclamation meeting for the February 5th council meeting. This is a night that we really love as representatives of the city because it's our opportunity to recognize people throughout the community that are really doing some amazing things. So we'll get started on that in a few minutes, but first we're going to start the way we always do with asking God's blessing on our gathering and Minister Vanessa Ford, I believe, is here. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
May we bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this special time, O God, and we ask you right now to bless it with clarity and purpose, God. We come thanking you, O God, for every blessing that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for blessing those in attendance, God. We thank you for blessing our great city, O God, and we thank you for blessing these council members. So now, God, we just invite your presence in so that you're able to do what you need to do in this time, God. We thank you for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we go about the business of the city. So for every person who's here, O God, we ask you to just continue to bless and keep them. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Ford, thank you for being here this evening and please thank your congregation for sharing you with us. And we, I just want to say thank you and thank your Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church congregation for sharing you this evening.
Sure will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to get started with our, oh no, we've got our pledge of allegiance. Hey, you guys forgive me, I'm still learning the ropes up here. So we have Boy Scouts Pack 100. We're going to ask y'all to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. How about that? Thank you. Ready when you are.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States, head of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation in your God, in whose will the loyalty and justice for
If you would, I know supposedly you have a question to ask, but if you would, first, let's let them say their names and maybe what grade they're in and where they go to school.
So we're going to start.
My name is Leo. I'm 11 years old. I go to Genshin Elementary School.
My name is Tenetta. I go to Diamond Matinee Academy and I am 10 years old.
You'll tell us your name?
My name's Arrow and I go to Hannan.
Great job.
My name is Kai McNeely. I go to Hannan and I am Arrow's brother.
My name is Brianna Batson. I am 10 years old and I go to Reese Road. I am in 5th grade.
My name is Brandon Turner. I am a 5th grader in Reese Road Elementary and she is my best buddy.
Fantastic. If we get the...
By the way, we did not kiss under our pledge sets.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. We want to keep this G rated. We want to let our leaders introduce themselves? Can you let your leaders introduce themselves, your pack leaders?
I am Brandon Turner's mom, Tanya Turner. I am the den leader for the boys up here because there are two separate dens and this is my co-leader.
Hi, my name's Jessica McNeely. I'm the, I guess, the girls' arrow of light leader and...
She does everything.
And I am the mother of Kai and Arrow, the funny one.
We appreciate you guys being with us to say our pledge. And you had a question?
Yes.
And this is the one that said he didn't kiss her that's going to ask this question? We may not, we may not have time.
Please don't say anything about it.
Yes, sir. Go ahead. What's your, what's your, what's your question?
So what are you doing to help the homeless in the community and is there anything that the scouts and Cub Scouts can help with?
Oh, what a great question. Actually, we do a lot. We do it through the continuum of care that is, is going on right now. They've just taken account so that they know how we're doing with trying to eradicate homelessness. Pat Frey would love to have you help her and I have your number. I will call your leaders and we will get you involved because you're right. I think the homelessness that we experience, we have folks experiencing in our community, is everyone's responsibility to try to help a little bit. Thank you for asking. Great question.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys. Give them a hand. Oh, oh, are any, are any parents here?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any of the parents here? Would they like to stand up and be recognized?
Do you guys want to stand up?
If your parents are these scouts?
Don't.
Yes. You guys need to stand up and take credit for these great young people. Fantastic. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
And I will get you in touch with Ms. Frey so that you can help with the homelessness. All right, we're, as I mentioned earlier, this is a proclamation meeting where we spend a little time recognizing people that do some great things in our community. And one of the things that we really like doing is recognizing our, some of our own. Columbus Consolidated Government has some of the most incredible people working for it and you don't often get to meet them, you don't often get to hear much about them. So we take an opportunity every once in a while through our peer awards to recognize these individuals. So I'm going to turn on the Mayor Pro Tem's microphone and we're going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Pew if she will recognize these individuals. In the meantime, if we can get Shahara Thrasher, Terry Vaughn, Tommy Beauchamp, Valerie Streeter to come forward. And you know, if you have somebody, a member of your family, that wants to come join you up here, that's great because we want to recognize them as well.
What's the one from their department?
Him.
What's the one from their department?
If you don't have, if you don't have anybody here with you, just some of whoever your department head is, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to stand in.
And we're going to do something a little different this time. Since I have a microphone, I can take privilege. Because I hate just reading the same thing to each one. So with that person that you have selected to stand with you, Shahara, Shara, I want the person you have selected to stand with you to go to the microphone. And I want you to, what's your name?
Sheila Thrasher.
Ms. Sheila.
Mm-hmm.
Tell us five things, five quick things about Shara that we should know why she would have been selected for this award.
Well, Shahara is my first loving daughter, my only daughter. We are proud parents of her graduating from Henry County School. She plays a very big role in our son life, boys kicking him, kicking him up to kind of get the same quality that she had, but I think she is a little bit tougher than he is. But Shahara has really been a real special person in my life because also my husband in the Army, going to Afghanistan, Kuwait, Shahara had to play a very big role in my life during the time of her daddy, in a way.
And the award reads, and this will read each one of them, it says, "Whereas employees of Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets, and whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees, including the peer award, and whereas promoting employee excellence to recognition award, recognizes employees who make constant contributions to the organizations through outstanding job performance, who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and our customer service, and who significantly enhance the work environment by contributing to the personal well-being of coworkers and or their families. And whereas Miss Thrasher, an employee of Parks and Rec, has been selected as recipient for the fourth quarter of 2018, and whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. And therefore, B.H. Henderson III...
Say Skip.
Skip. Mayor, Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 5th, as Shahara Thrasher Day. And you heard it from her mother's mouth. Congratulations. Our next recipient and to share the day with is Terry Vaughn. Terry, who do you want to speak on the other half?
You want me to speak?
Uh-uh. Who do you want to speak?
Hey, I'm Tommy Savage. This is my husband Terry. And can, I'm going to be hard-pressed for five, maybe just three things.
That'll work.
No, Terry's a very dedicated person. He, he carries his work with him all the time. He's not just an employee here. This is his career. He's very dedicated to what he does. He's a very cerebral person and works out everything that he can to his best end. And a wonderful father of two girls and grandfather to three now and my best friend.
How about that?
And this too says, Terry Vaughn, an employee of the St. Justin Court Department, has been selected as recipient for the fourth quarter of 2018, and whereas all citizens are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. And it is also your day too, Terry, and we congratulate you. Well, we knew from the other day, you don't speak last, so... Okay, Tommy, I'm probably going to miss your last name. Tommy Beauchamp?
Yes, ma'am.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Beauchamp.
Beauchamp, okay.
Yes, Beauchamp.
Things that you might not know, when we were going through accreditation and trying to finalize those reams and reams and reams of documentation, Bo very generously agreed to what I would call herding cats. He had to get each of the division chiefs to complete their paperwork and he managed not to tick anybody off too badly. And the result was we got 100% score. So he did a wonderful job on that. He has operated as one of our most professional correctional officers for a number of years and recently got promoted. He's now the Assistant Director of Landfills. And so he's learning all about everything from composting to state permitting and environmental issues and is already making a difference there. He's good with people and has made an impact in his operation already. So we're very, very pleased to have him as part of the team.
And whereas he is an employee of Public Works Department and he also is a recipient for the fourth quarter of 2018, whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of this government are urged to congratulate him and to recognize and appreciate the contributions he's made to the public good. Now therefore Skip, excuse me, Henderson, Mayor, Columbus, Georgia, hereby proclaims Tuesday, February 5th, as Tommy Beauchamp, Day in Columbus, Georgia. Congratulations. And Ms. Valerie Streeter. You sure you want her to speak for you?
I am pleased to be able to speak really on behalf of Tia Sha Johnson, who is her supervisor, but in her absence, I am just delighted to be able to do so. Valerie Streeter is again with the 311 Division. She's been with the city for nine years. She has two children. She is married to the retired Fire Chief Streeter, who retired not long ago. But she is one that can be depended on. Tia Sha really depends on Valerie's organizational skills, her, she's very dependable and reliable. And so we're just delighted to have her as a part of the city manager's office and the fact that she is looking for a long career here with the city. And so we're just delighted for her to be a part of that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir, you may.
She is a very fine, hard-working employee and I'm proud to have her as part of the city manager's office and in the 311 Center. And when we need someone to fill in downtown in my office, she will often come down and fill in. And you know, they, they get some, they get a mixture of calls, if you know what I mean, in the 311 Center. And I have learned that many of those calls can be challenging. But when they are down and out in the 311 Center as they get all these calls, I've come to realize by hearing from others in the 311 Center that Valerie Streeter is the mother, the counselor, the advisor, she's the problem solver, she's the glue. And for all of those things and all that you do, Valerie, I want to say thank you. You do a great job.
Valerie.
Valerie?
Valerie.
She's going to read her Black Mason first. See, I'm telling you, she's in charge too.
Well, you know she's in, from the city manager's office. She was also selected as a recipient for the fourth quarter of 2018. And we urge all citizens and employees to recognize and appreciate the contributions she has made to this government. And I just want to say, we thank you. We really appreciate the hard work you put in for us.
You're welcome.
Now therefore, B.H. Henderson III, Mayor, Columbus, Georgia, hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 5th, as Valerie Streeter Day. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to make one quick comment. We had the opportunity to host all of these winners in the mayor's office. We got a chance to meet them and talk to them a little bit about what they do. And Valerie came up with an idea that we are actually going to employ. She, we were talking about innovation and about thinking about doing things a little bit different than the way we always do them. And she said, why don't you get some of the team members, some of the employees together in sort of an innovation committee? So we're going to do it, provided you're on it. So we'll be reaching out to you. We're going to put that together. I think that's a great idea. Thank you. And we've, we've got another individual that is receiving recognition tonight. So if we could get our, our own Lindsey Glisten to come forward, please, and bring your family
Who you want to talk about too?
Do I want to talk about me?
Who do you?
No. Oh, y'all can.
That's what I had planned to do. So see, we think, we have that connection. I want each counselor to take just a minute to say what they want to say about Lindsey. We start on that end with John.
Well, I know that anytime I have a question about something, I know I can go to Lindsey and she always gets me the answer really quick and it's always right. And I appreciate that hard work and how you have put up with all the stuff you've had to put up with from people like me. So thank you very much for what you do.
It's my pleasure.
Lindsey, you have made the transition into this chair extremely easy. I couldn't have done it without you. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I just have to say ditto to everything that John said and more because she does keep all of us on our toes, reminds us of appointments, things that we need to do. So I guess everybody is just going to pretty much say what John and we say ditto, but you're greatly appreciated for all that you do.
Thank you.
Do I get to say anything?
I would say that Lindsey has always done her job with a smile on her face. You don't know that if there's ever anything not to smile about, but she's always very pleasant, she's always very friendly, she's always very professional, and she always gets the job done. And so I too want to echo what my fellow counselors have said. Congratulations, Lindsey.
Thank you.
And as you well know, I was taught something by her. I planned all my meetings on my own up until about a year ago. And she sat me down and explained to me that the clerk's office is there for the council. This is what we do. We take care of you. And she proceeded to make my life a lot easier by getting my meetings in order. I have one coming up soon and it's going like clockwork. And then to your sweetheart, he's been so kind and understanding because for the last two Christmases, we have talked in coals at 11 o'clock at night about city business. So thank you for sharing her during the holidays and I'll try to do better. Thank you. Congratulations.
Lindsey, everything everyone else has said is so true, but I just want to highlight your work ethic. There've been so many times where you've texted me after hours or in the middle of a meeting and it's been something where you're trying to fix a problem I was facing. And there's never a time limit with you. You always work so hard to get everything done and we really appreciate you.
I think just dealing with the multiple type A personalities up here says all, should I say multiple personalities? Lindsey's always been diligent, responsive, proactive, and she always does her work with a smile and I really appreciate that. That'll get you a long way in life. So we're proud of you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Oh, I can go? I'll be quick. I just want to, I just want to point out that when I think of Lindsey, I think of one word and that's dependable. These folks, when they call you, they need something, they usually wait, I did anyway, to the last minute you come through. And you always seem to be driven by a sincere desire to serve other people, even to the point of selflessness. So thank you for what you do.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
You may.
I went to, all of those adjectives that Counselor Davis used, I would just add her professionalism.
First sentence or the last?
But I mean, she's always just so professional. And when you make a request via email or in person, I mean, she is spot on. She is on it and without delay, Lindsey, you do great work. And so simply one, all those things you've heard around the table, I would say the word that was not said, but in there is your professionalism. So thank you.
Thank you.
I can get to close it out. It'd be nice.
Yes, ma'am.
Lindsey and I have some, have traveled several months to a meeting and been with some, so we get to really talk while we're going down the country road if I don't fall asleep. And she is very professional. Okay, when you call Lindsey, she's going to answer whether it's after 5:00, during the week, or whether it's on the weekend. She's going to be there for you. And whatever you need, she'll find out what it is you need, how to get it to you. If she has to leave home and you tell her, no, Lindsey, don't do that. But I'll be all right. So it's finally good to see the rest of your family. I've heard them on the phone. But to see the children, Lindsey's real proud of you all. And you all helped Lindsey make us proud of her. So I just want to say thank you, Lindsey, for all you do for us.
Thank you.
And that's Lindsey. She has faith. So they'll be getting married soon, hopefully.
He's not, he hasn't run away yet. So I think we're good to go.
Whereas the employees of Columbus Consolidated Government are its most valuable assets, and whereas it is important to recognize the various achievements of employees, and whereas the Individual Excellence Award is the highest form of recognition given an employee of the Columbus Consolidated Government, and whereas the Individual Excellence Award recognizes employees who make consistent contributions to the organization through outstanding job performance as viewed by supervisors and managers, and who set an example of outstanding quality management, teamwork, and our customer service. Whereas Lindsey Glisten, an employee of the Legislative branch, has been selected as a recipient for the fourth quarter of 2018, and whereas all citizens of Columbus and employees of Columbus Consolidated Government are urged to recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. Now therefore, B.H. Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, hereby proclaims Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, as Lindsey Glisten Day.
If you would, have your, rest of your family stand, everybody that came to support you.
It's a pretty, pretty big group. I just want to say thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for making me tear up. I appreciate all the kind words. I love what I do. You know, it makes it easier in the tough times, really, when you're tired and you have 5 million things going on and 5 million things to get done within five minutes. You know, I love it and that's what pushes me. So I thank you for... So I thank you for trusting me and serving you as your deputy clerk and counsel. And to my fiance and my stepkids for putting up with me for the past five months, because it was not an easy road. So I want to thank them, because, you know, they're in this too with me. So thank you.
Lindsay, thank you. We have, we have some pretty incredible employees with the Columbus Consolidated Government. And these are representative of the 3,000 that deserve awards. And we'll get them, I'm sure, but we, we only bring them up four at a time. But thank you all for what you do, for the city of Columbus. All right, moving on. We've got, we want to recognize the folks with Micah's Promise. Are those representatives here? And Counselor Crabbe is going to be presenting the proclamation. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bobby Starr, and I'm the executive director of Micah's Promise. I would like to invite up all of our supporters, because I think, Mr. Richburg. We've brought some of our partners in our community. We have partnerships with elementary schools, with Northside High School, with Columbus State University. And I would love for our supporters and our volunteers to introduce themselves, if that would be okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Glass.
Greg Starcher.
Brett Murphy-Dawson.
And say where you're from, too, what organization you represent.
I'm a board member of Micah's Promise and also here representing stewards of children with putting towards wellness.
I'm Kristin Jones, and I'm a volunteer with Micah's Promise.
I'm Susan Rogers, and I'm a board member with Micah's Promise.
So I'm Emily Stires, and I'm a marketing teacher at Northside High School. And we've been doing a campaign over what she's gonna talk about, but these are two of my students.
I'm Mackenzie White, and I'm from Northside High School.
I'm Cheyenne Brosom, and I'm from Northside High School.
I'm Kimberly Gill. I'm from Columbus State University.
I'm Raquel Aponte from Columbus State University.
Agnes Shelton, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Columbus Alumni Chapter. We're advocates.
Good evening, Sharon Seneca, Columbus State University and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Columbus Alumni Chapter.
Lakeisha Stringer, board member at the Homeless Resource Network.
I'm Willie Jones, and I'm a Pi, member for East Columbus Elementary School, Kendra's High School, also Edron Conne Middle School. I'm post American Legion 333.
I'm sorry, I'm just supporting. I'm Marty Richburg, principal at Northside High School.
And this is Amazing Raven. She's hiding in the corner taking video. I'm just so, I can't tell you how excited I am. We started in 2014 out of Christ Community Church, grassroots completely. You know, I spent several years working out of my car. Dr. House, I'm so excited to meet you. He was one of my professors, and I had him online, never saw him face to face. I hope you forgot the papers I wrote. But we, we've progressed. We've come so far. And we need to come even further, because this issue has only grown exponentially. The domestic minor sex trafficking of children is, is one of the worst things happening to our kids today. It is the worst thing happening. And as you can see, by all of our partnerships and, and these collaborations, it's so necessary, because it touches every aspect of society. Okay? So from our homelessness, from our sexual abuse, our childhood sexual abuse, poverty, there's so many areas that this impacts. And we are now part of the State Trafficking Task Force. So we are bringing and disseminating information from the state down to our community. And our community was on their list for quite, quite a while. So we are now being represented at the state level. Our high school students, our college students, we have college students up in North Georgia at Delonica. And we have college students at the, in the Rotary Club at UGA that are fighting for Micah's Promise, fighting for children. I brought y'all our latest RAC cards. We had to change our numbers. Because last year, almost 800 children were identified in our state as trafficking victims. That's just identified. And it's boys and girls. So what we're trying to do is build a therapeutic treatment facility that is not a small feat, but it's gonna happen. We are almost there to our capital campaign. And it's gonna serve youth in our whole state. So look at these people who care about our kids and care about our community, and as, as well as y'all do. So we really appreciate you. Thank you. I want, oh, please, I'm sorry, one more. I want these two young ladies to come up here, these DECA students. Come here, come here, come here. This is our future, our students and our teachers that inspire them. These two students, tell your names again, girls?
Mackenzie White.
Cheyenne Brosom.
And why did you want to address trafficking? How did, how did it, how did it, when did you learn about it?
My grandparents run the Columbus Dream Center off of Oats Avenue. Their names are Charlie and Martha White. And they, they do, every third Saturday of every month, they give back to the homeless and the less fortunate for absolutely nothing. They do it for free because of the kindness in their hearts. And my grandmother actually was talking to one of the women that came in. And she said that there was a brothel, which is a home where men come to sleep with the, the girls that live there. And she said it just broke her heart. So she really is the one that got me in, that got me to start thinking about it more. And then we came up with a public relations project for DECA. And it just, we just want to shine a light on the issue.
And I, I always want to really make a difference. And then we found out about this. And we just thought it'll be great to really let people know, because a lot of people don't know how bad the issue really is. So I'm just glad that I can help others figure out.
Great job, great job.
And what we know now, I could have told you several years ago that what makes a child vulnerable to sex trafficking is childhood sexual abuse. It's the number one preconditioning factor. The next thing is being in the foster care system. We still, in our community, have over 400 children in our foster care system and less than 100 foster families. Those children are highly vulnerable to traffickers and the grooming of traffickers. But what's leveled the playing field now that all children are vulnerable to trafficking is social media. And now traffickers have access to everybody's children. And so it's really important that we teach and educate our students what to look for. So there's now curriculum that needs to be taught in our middle and high schools to teach children that they are vulnerable and what manipulation looks like. There's also, I've provided with the school system, I've provided the Muskogee County School System, an online training for teachers. It's one hour free webinar that will teach our teachers what to look for in, to see if they're, any of their students are trafficking victims. And what we know now is teachers are our first responders. When trafficking victims are interviewed and rescued and asked, who could have made a difference for you? Who could have given you a resource? And they say, my teacher. And if you think about that, our foster children, who, those who have to leave our county, because we don't have enough foster parents, their teacher is the only person who's been consistent. When they change from county to county, they go to school. So there's so many ways that we can address this issue. I'm sorry, I got on my soapbox and I'm gonna stop.
No, Bobby, we appreciate everything you do. Counselor, Counselor Crabbe has the proclamation for you.
Whereas January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, as created by Presidential Proclamation in 2011 by then-President Barack Obama and observed on January 11. And whereas commercial sexual exploitation of children is a form of human trafficking or modern day slavery. And 300,000 American children are victims or vulnerable to sex trafficking yearly in the U.S. And whereas in 2016, 469 children in the state of Georgia were identified as victims of commercial sexual exploitation of children or human trafficking, with over 90% having a history of childhood sexual abuse, 89% with history in the foster care system, and the average age of 14. And whereas Micah's Promise has been educating and mobilizing the community since 2014 through community training, collaborations, and partnerships to address the issue of commercial sexual exploitation of children. And whereas Micah's Promise is an official partner agency with the State Human Trafficking Task Force, through collaborating and cooperating on a state level, using confined resources and shared information to fight human trafficking in our state. And whereas Micah's Promise is dedicated to the restoration of stolen childhoods by continuing to educate and mobilize the community and building a therapeutic treatment facility for children, for child victims of commercial sexual exploitation. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, as Micah's Promise Day.
Your example to help raise money for you. These are our latest statistics. You rock.
Bobby, before y'all leave, I think Counselor Davis had, wanted to make a comment or two, if you, if you have just a second. Thanks, Mayor. For everybody gets out of the room, I just wanted to say something a little bit about Bobby tonight. And I, I kind of knew Bobby from a distance. We all play tennis out at Cooper Creek and USTA and the tennis leagues and heck of a tennis player. But I never got to really know her until one day she shows up at one of my daughter's urban farm projects. And I'm out there working. I didn't know who Bobby was at the time. But she started talking to me. I started getting to know her in between our work. And, you know, I can tell you, she's got incredible work ethic. But she started sharing with me some of her visions, some of the things that she was really concerned about. And I can tell you, after that day was over, like I said, there was no question about the work ethic. But I knew that her heart was in the right place. So Bobby, I'm just happy that things have come to fruition and that you are starting in the right direction. Just seeing all the good things that's happening, I, I think that good things are gonna happen in Columbus, Georgia. And just learning and having conversations with Bobby, what I've come to learn just about our state. I think some of the statistics are disheartening, but at the same time, eye-opening of what's actually going on in the state of Georgia. And even more so, Bobby has been a, an inspiration and a help to me. I've been reaching out to her, by the way, dealing with some of these matters that we're dealing with, with the foster care programs or wherever, or group homes that people have been requesting on a, on a, in, on a regular basis. But we have a moratorium on that. But one of the things I'm gonna be doing, and Bobby's helped me in doing this, is I'm gonna be calling for another resolution to send to Atlanta through our delegate. And I'm gonna be asking you for your support. But Bobby has really helped me understand about the need for a 1-800 number for, that needs to go up in these group homes. But not only that, the training. And she talked a little bit about the training. The training is an absolute. You heard what she just said about the startling numbers that have taken place in these group homes. It's just a, a stepping stone. And a lot of these people involved in, in sex trafficking are, are, are just sitting there waiting to prey on these young kids that have no place to go once they finish and become young adults. There's no place for them to go. And they're preying on them. Well, we got to figure out a way to stop that. I think this council has an opportunity to do that, our delegation certainly. And I hope that they're making progress up there. But Bobby has helped me from the standpoint of networking and getting to the right people to make sure that we can get things done in the state of Georgia. So Bobby, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your heart.
Thank you.
And the ministry and what you're doing here locally. But not only that, I think good things are gonna happen. So we really appreciate you. And I appreciate all the folks that are there with you. And I know you'd be the first to say that it's, it's a team effort. So.
It's a God thing, too. I'm gonna tell you that first. I mean, it's absolutely God. God is in this. And he wants everybody else to be in it for these kids. And it is a team effort.
And I got. On a personal note, I, I found out, too, that Bobby was in her graduate, doing her graduate studies along with my daughter. They both earned their master's degree. And she told me later that you really helped her out. And I just thank, I thank you for you doing that, taking time to invest in her.
Y'all determined to make me cry. Okay.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you so much. I bless y'all.
Thank you so much for what you do. Next, we've got Counselor Thomas recognizing Citywide Arbor Day. I know Dorothy and Gloria are back there. I didn't see Scott or Bill. Are they in? Pat Bigler, our director's cabinet? Welcome, ladies.
It's a pleasure to read this proclamation into the record and to recognize your efforts on behalf of our community. Whereas Columbus, Georgia was the first city in the state of Georgia to earn the certification as a Tree City USA. And whereas Columbus, Georgia will celebrate the 41st anniversary of Arbor Day on Saturday, February 16th, 2019, with a tree jamboree, including tree planting and educational demonstrations at Lake Bottom Wercova Park. And whereas Trees Columbus Incorporated, Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Columbus Consolidated Government Tree Board, and Columbus Consolidated Government Urban Forest and Beautification Division will partner in that celebration. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City Council of Columbus, Georgia, and the National Arbor Day Foundation urge citizens to support tree planting, excuse me, to enhance beautification and increase the tree canopy throughout our city. And whereas the City Council of Columbus, Georgia, supports the collaborative efforts of the Columbus Consolidated Government Urban and Urban Forestry and Beautification Division, Columbus Consolidated Government Tree Board, Trees Columbus, Inc., and the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission in their efforts to encourage planting and protecting trees. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim.
our partnership with the city has been a fabulous asset, not just for us, but for all of Columbus. And Columbus is a city that loves its trees, and we keep learning that over and over again in different ways. But we appreciate the people of Columbus and their love for trees, and we really look forward to having you all out on Saturday. We're going to have a good time and really celebrate our trees down at Lake Bottom, so please join us. And this little rascal is Lucy May, and she is going to be there as well, right?
Lucy May has the coolest boots I've seen in a couple of years. Pat?
Let me just say that I've worked in a number of cities over the years, and Columbus is incredibly lucky to have the number of organizations who come forward and volunteer and help make this such a wonderful place to live. The quality of life here is so enhanced because of the tree cover, and we have a lot of people helping out to make that happen. So thank you.
If you want to come around, let us thank you for your work. Keep Columbus Beautiful and Trees Columbus are two amazing assets in helping us prevent, protect our environment and keep our city looking nice. Thank you all for what you do. Next, we're going to recognize the Partners in Education Week with Counselor Barnes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
It is my pleasure to read this proclamation. It reads thusly. It says, "Whereas the Partners in Education, PI, program of the Greater Columbus, Georgia Chamber of Commerce enhances the quality of education of youth in Columbus and surrounding communities. And whereas through the Partners in Education program, over 300 businesses, military units, civic and faith-based organizations are making a difference in education of our youth. Whereas because of this program, education in over 80 public and private schools in five Georgia counties, Muskogee, Chattahoochee, Fort Benning, Marion, Talbot, and schools in two Alabama counties, Phoenix City and Russell, are being improved. And whereas the public and private partnerships in education are strengthening our schools and lives of our youth through volunteer hours exceeding 22,800 hours in the 2017-2018 school year, with monetary contributions and donations of goods in excess of $693,000. And whereas, the very highest priority to the many individuals and organizations involved in the Partners in Education program is the education and ultimate success of our youth." Now therefore, V.H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the week of February 4th to the 8th, 2019, as Partners in Education PI Week.
Would you tell us who you are and tell us a little bit about PI?
Sure. My name is Angela Allison. I am the PI Program Manager at the Greater Columbus, Georgia Chamber of Commerce. I have managed the program for the last two years. I am excited to be a part of such an awesome initiative that has been a strong-running program at the Chamber for 31 years. We are in the process of doing some really amazing and innovative things in the upcoming school year. So this is an annual opportunity for us to say thank you to our many, many partners in our schools and the seven districts that we cover. So on the behalf of the Chamber and the Partners in Education Board of Directors, thank you all, Mayor Skip Henderson, Mayor Pro Tem is Evelyn Pew, and council members. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Angela. Ma'am?
My name's Jamie Thomas. I work for Enrichment Services Program, and I serve on the PI Board of Directors.
Thank you for your work. Y'all come around, let us thank you. Thank you, ladies. Next, we have Counselor House recognizing United Way 211 Day. See Candace Poole, is Scott Ferguson here?
He is not. He sends his words.
Okay. Well, it's certainly a pleasure to have an opportunity to recognize 211, since I'm well aware of the good work that they do. So I'll now read this proclamation. "The agency now known as United Way of the Chattahoochee Valley has been an active partner of our community since 1950, when it began as a grassroots organization funding agencies that serve individuals and families. And whereas in the past, it was often difficult and confusing for citizens to identify and access available services, citizens can now dial 211 to speak to trained resource specialists, text 898211, or visit the website at http://www.211uwev.org to be connected to thousands of different services. And whereas 211 is a free and easy-to-remember telephone number that connects people with important community services, such as food, shelter, rent, utility assistance, volunteer opportunities, et cetera, 24 hours a day, while helping maintain the integrity of and complementing both the 911 and 311 systems. And whereas 211 now offers confidential support for those affected by opioid by texting opioid to 898211 for resources and ongoing encouragement. And whereas 211 provides critical information to citizens throughout the year and in terms of community emergency, such as Hurricane Michael. And whereas during the 2018 calendar year, almost 9,500 callers received over 27,000 referrals for services and over 29,000 web searches were conducted." Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, as United Way 211 Day.
First, Mayor Henderson, Mayor Pro Tem Turner, the council members, we just want to thank you for having the opportunity to let you all celebrate with us this service that we have in Columbus. So many communities don't have it, and I think we're very fortunate that United Way had decided to bring this back several years ago. We are still building our resources out there, so we are always encouraging agencies that provide services to our community to let us know. One of the things that we did do last year that we've highlighted that hasn't been mentioned a lot is we were one of 11 communities in our country to start a national texting service for the opioid crisis. It's an amazing service. It helps people who are struggling through these addiction issues. It helps both the families and the friends who are trying to assist them through this, and service providers as well, to get more information and the resources they need on this crisis. And I wish our gentlemen from the Boy Scouts were still here, because I could talk about how much Pat Fray wants to work with them, and let them know that anyone in our community who sees someone who's experiencing homelessness can have them call 211, because that is the coordinated entry point for anyone who's experiencing homelessness in our community, and it's that first step in getting them housed. So we just, once again, want to thank you guys for the opportunity to celebrate with you and partnering, well, like we said, with 911 and 311 to make Columbus the great place that it is.
What an amazing resource. Thank you all for providing it for the folks in the Chattahoochee Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come around, let us thank you. Thank you. We had two other proclamations that didn't make it on your agendas, but I want to ask Counselor House if he'd keep the mic and recognize our Riley Land and our Severe Weather Awareness Week. Well, again, it's certainly a pleasure to have an opportunity to recognize all the great work that the Homeland Security Emergency Management Professionals do in Columbus, Georgia, and Severe Weather Awareness Week. So I'll read this proclamation into the record. "Whereas each year, citizens of Columbus, Georgia face the threat of severe weather events, such as lightning, thunderstorms, floods, flash floods, hailstorms, tornadoes, and hurricanes, all potentially dangerous to life, health, and property. And whereas urbanization and continued population growth increase the potential for these storms to cause death and destruction. And whereas during the past 25 years, severe weather events caused the deaths of over 240 people in Georgia. And whereas numerous weather-related injuries and substantial property damage occurred in Georgia in 2018. And whereas it is vital that effective public education programs concerning severe weather systems and preparedness procedures continue for the benefit of all Georgians. And whereas the Emergency Management Division of the Columbus Fire and Emergency Medical Services, the Office of the Mayor, elected leaders, and news media are committed to continuing efforts to inform Georgia's citizens on safety and severe weather preparedness procedures, so they may better protect themselves, their families, and neighbors. And whereas all citizens of Columbus, Georgia are urged to join in this effort to become more aware of severe weather safety measures and to participate in the various awareness programs scheduled during the week, such as Family Protection Day on Monday, February 4th, and Statewide Tornado Drill Day on Wednesday, February 6th. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the week of February 4th to the 8th, 2019, as Severe Weather Awareness Week." Thank you. Thank you for allowing me just a moment to join you in helping our citizens laser-focus on this week, because we know we can't change the weather, and we know, living in Georgia, we're going to get to experience all four seasons in 24 hours. And we're going to have tornadoes, we're going to have thunderstorms, we're going to have floods, and we can't stop them. We can mitigate some of the effects, but we try to warn the public. The public needs to get warning of those events that are about to occur, know the actions to take ahead of time, so that they can take those actions quickly and possibly save their lives, the lives of their families or their coworkers, and then be able to recover from those disasters by being prepared as a family, by being prepared as an individual, and as a company. So your attention being brought to this tonight, I really appreciate it. It helps us give emphasis to the public, and that's what we're all about. You might want to mention the tornado drill. Absolutely. We will sound the outdoor emergency warning sirens tomorrow morning about 9 o'clock, based on the weather. If the weather is inclement, then we'll push that out to next Friday, but we think the weather will be nice enough. National Weather Service will issue a alert, and we'll sound those sirens and let the public practice, let our citizens and our government employees practice what they would do in the event that this were real. And let that be the drill. We'll sound the all-clear about 10 minutes later, let all of our schoolkids get back to school, and all of our workers get back to work. So we will take part in that tomorrow, so don't be alarmed. Riley, before you leave, I do want to say that Riley's like the insurance guy. You'd hope you never need him, but you sure are glad he's there when bad things happen. And I got to tell you, just personally, learning as much as we have in a short time about, not only about the way we handle situations when they do occur, but the preparedness that we go through as a community and the coordination that you conduct, just in case weather turns really, really bad, is amazing. And I think if everybody knew everything that is done within this government, you'd really feel a lot better about the changes in the weather, and it can change quickly in Columbus, Georgia. So publicly, thank you for what you do. We give all the credit to our department heads, our outside agencies, the leaders of those organizations, and our elected officials, because they stand ready. We simply are there to help any way we can, but all of our departments within the city immediately come together and apply the resources, and they're glad to do it. They work with a happy hand, and they get it done. Seen it done for many years. So thank you all. Riley, come around, let us shake your hand, thank you for what you do. And we didn't intentionally save the best for last, but we do want to recognize our Daughters of the American Revolution, who are here for Georgia Day, and Counselor Thomas is going to recognize them. Ladies, welcome.
It's a pleasure and honor to read this proclamation into the record in recognition of the efforts of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas Oglethorpe Chapter, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution of Columbus, Georgia, is the, I'm sorry, is the fifth oldest DAR chapter in the state of Georgia. And whereas the chapter bears the name of James, excuse me, James Edward Oglethorpe, who on February 12th, 1733, brought 116 settlers to Yamakroff, is that correct? Yamakroff Bluff, for the purpose of settling the colony of Georgia. And whereas James Edward Oglethorpe traveled across Indian occupied land to Kalwita, the Muskogee Creek Native American capital located on the Chattahoochee River below the city of Columbus. And there, on August 21st, 1739, he obtained permission by virtue of a second treaty with the Native Americans to allow the permanent colony of Georgia to be settled. And whereas Governor Alexander Stephens, who was 1737 to 1750, wrote in his journal that Georgia Day was always marked on February 12th by the firing of guns, the hosting of flags, and the drinking of toast. And whereas the Council of Columbus, Georgia, proclaims that Georgia Day be celebrated across the city during the remaining days of February by flying the Georgia flag, allowing the motto "In God We Trust" in schools and on government buildings, and reading of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Georgia flag. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 12th, 2019, as Georgia Day.
I'm Georgia Day Chairman for Oglethorpe Chapter. This is our Regent.
Mary Mullins.
Ruth Mullins, and our Sister Ayn, who is treasurer of our society. And I want to say that since the middle 1980s...
And we didn't intentionally save the best for last, but we do want to recognize our Daughters of the American Revolution who are here for Georgia Day, and Counselor Thomas is going to recognize them. Ladies, welcome.
It's a pleasure and an honor to read this proclamation into the record in recognition of the efforts of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Whereas Oglethorpe Chapter, National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution of Columbus, Georgia, is the, I'm sorry, is the fifth oldest DAR chapter in the state of Georgia. And whereas the chapter bears the name of James, excuse me, James Edward Oglethorpe, who on February 12th, 1733, brought 116 settlers to Yamakroff? Is that correct? Yamakroff Bluff, for the purpose of settling the colony of Georgia. And whereas James Edward Oglethorpe traveled across Indian occupied land to Calweda, the Muskogee Creek Native American capital located on the Chattahoochee River below the city of Columbus. And there, on August 21st, 1739, he obtained permission by virtue of a second treaty with the Native Americans to allow the permanent colony of Georgia to be settled. And whereas Governor Alexander Stephens, who was 1737 to 1750, wrote in his journal that Georgia Day was always marked on February 12th by the firing of guns, the hosting of flags, and the drinking of toast. And whereas the Council of Columbus, Georgia proclaims that Georgia Day be celebrated across the city during the remaining days of February by flying the Georgia flag, allowing the motto "In God We Trust" in schools and on government buildings, and reading of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Georgia Flag. Now therefore, Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 12th, 2019 as Georgia Day.
I'm Biddy Hammett. I'm Georgia Day Chairman for Oglethorpe Chapter. This is our Regent.
Mary Mullins.
Mary Ruth Mullins and her sister, Anne, who is treasurer of our society. And I want to say that since the middle 1980s, it has been my great pleasure to work with the City Council of Columbus. Now, I don't know when Skip came on, but Evelyn was here back when Columbus was certified, and you were here, too, as the only city certified in historic preservation. And I want to commend this council, the continuing Columbus Council, for supporting historic preservation and certainly remembering the 286th birthday of Georgia is an act of preservation. And we certainly do thank you, and we hope that, well, we really got it in the works with Richard Smith to having this made a perpetual celebration on the Georgia calendar. So again, we certainly do thank you, and thank you because we were very tardy in requesting this proclamation.
Well, Ms. Hammett, ladies, we thank y'all for bringing our attention to the fact that we should celebrate the birthday of this tremendous state. And we thank you for your diligence in seeing that we do that.
Well, these ladies are the dedicated ones. In my old age, this is my swan song. In my old age...
Would you like to make some comments?
These two go to all the Washington meetings, all the Georgia meetings. They really do carry the flag, and the Georgia flag.
Well, the DAR has three missions. And as Biddy said, historic preservation is one, education, and patriotism. And we do a lot all over the United States toward that. We have about 185,000 members right now. We're shooting to get 250,000 before our 250th anniversary of the United States. We are the world's largest women-only service organization. We also have the world's largest women-owned, women-built, women-maintained building in the world. So it takes up a whole block in Washington, DC. And I'd like to invite any of the ladies on the council to contact us, and we'll try to make you a member. And the wives of the husbands, we will try to make you a member. We already got one in the works.
Evelyn, that includes you, too.
It does.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. There were like 5,000 to 10,000 African-Americans that fought in the American Revolution. A lot of people don't realize that.
Well, thank you for what you do. Y'all come around, let us thank you. Thank you, ladies. And I'm going to turn the mic over to our Mayor Pro Tem so that she can offer up a number of resolutions honoring citizens who have served on various boards and recognizing them today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Expressing appreciation to Mr. Winford Flanagan for his meritorious service on the Airport Commission, to Dr. Carlos Wise for his service on the Board of Health, Mr. Don Cook on the Community Development Advisory Council, Mr. Gregory L. Smith for his service on the Community Development Advisory Council, Ms. Olive Vidal Kendall for her service on the Community Development Advisory Council, Ms. Shelley Dean for her service on the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissions, Ms. Lacy Harden for her service on the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissions, Ms. Allison Kots Rittenberg for her service on the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissions, expressing appreciation to Ms. Kendra Wright for her service on the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissions, Ms. Rashmi Hudson for her service on the Medical Center Hospital Authority, Mr. C. Robert Coon for his service on the Medical Center Hospital Authority, Mr. Warren Steele for his service on the Medical Center Hospital Authority, Ms. Gladys Williams Tillman for her service on the Personnel Review Board, and Ms. Casey Renfro for her service on the Tree Board and move for adoption of these resolutions.
Move to second. All in favor, say aye. Any post? We'll get a copy of that forwarded to those individuals. Does this council have any further business this evening? I will make one quick comment before we go, and I'm not trying to belabor this, but we've been getting a lot of questions about Katie, Katie the cow. And I figure we'd put this out there so people will understand our position on Katie, and that is that Katie will stay in her pasture where she is, unless whoever takes over as that property demands she be moved. And at that time, there will be very thorough and careful, pardon the pun, vetting of where Katie will end up. But as of right now, she is home in her pasture at the old historic site where Canette Dair used to be.
District 5.
In District 5. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I move to second. All in favor? I'll adjourn.